Six o'clock, we have four man clerk when you call.
Harry Adams, Brittany Brown.
Here.
Shag Brown.
Here.
David Gerhart.
Here.
Rick Hughes.
Here.
BD Nunrie. Josh Turner.
Here.
Don Douglas.
Here.
Harry did call me and he's in Lexington and could not, was trying to best get back here, he cannot. That's right on that. So this is implication, Shag?
Let's power heads for word of prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to be here to serve this community. Give us the wisdom, the strength, the guidance, and wherewithal to do your word. In Jesus Christ's name I pray, amen.
I won't place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Y'all, when my state stands, I'm facing Kentucky flag. It's Kentucky's. This always gets everybody. I pledge allegiance to the Kentucky flag and to the sovereign state for which it stands, one commonwealth blessed with diversity, natural wealth, beauty, and grace from on high.
I didn't have to eat that time.
I'll be right here at BD's spot. Right, where we business. Y'all want to speak now or do you want to wait till the ordinance comes up?
Me?
Yeah.
Either way, yeah, the quicker the better.
There will be a discussion when we call the ordinance, when we call the vote.
Okay.
All right, is that, is that all you want to talk about?
Yeah, just the ordinance.
You don't want to talk about anything else other than meeting?
No, just the, the ordinance.
Okay, all right.
I just want to get the same.
Sir?
Just the ordinance.
Just the ordinance and an ordinance? I know you're DB. I would like to introduce my niece, Lexi Page, Stapleton. And this her fiancee, Dawn Kim. I just got to meet him by the way, so he has that one discussion after this meeting.
Congratulations.
All right, public comments. Unfinished business, second reading ordinance number zero one dash two zero two zero.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Prestonsburg, Kentucky, establishing a regular meeting time of the city council to be the third Monday of each month at six P M.
And then motion, I put that motion. I got a motion and a second, in discussion. All in favor?
No.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry, roll call.
Brittany Brown?
Yes.
Shag Brown?
Yes.
David Gerhart?
Yes.
Rick Hughes?
Yes.
Josh Turner?
Yes.
Don Douglas?
Yes.
All right, pass. Second reading ordinance number zero two dash two zero two zero.
An ordinance of the Prestonsburg City Council admitting ordinance number oh five dash two thousand nine to add all domesticated animals to be covered and guidelines for adequate care.
And a motion?
Certainly.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Discussion. You're up.
May I go first?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Okay. Um, would you probably be seated or standing?
You know what?
It's up to you. If you want to get on camera though, you got to stand sort of sideways.
Camera can't see.
Camera sees the back of your head that way.
Okay, I'm not necessarily interested in fame or fortune. But I'll share this with you and I'll keep them concise and I've written it down here so that I won't, won't wonder. Uh, one of the preface to my comments, I would say this, that every law and regulation and ordinance, this is the basis on which I'm approaching this, and ordinance erodes our freedoms to some degree. Some are beneficial and necessary and some are unnecessary and burdensome. Uh, and also I would point out that there's also many K R S statutes that have been enacted to protect animals and individuals. I am a hundred percent behind the idea of providing necessary protection for animals and also providing safeguards for individuals so that they can live with the animals in a harmonious manner. My comments are this, there's basically five comments that I would make in regarding to, in regard to the, uh, radio, the ordinance that's, uh, that's on the floor. The existing and/or proposed revised animal ordinance appears to be deficient in respect to being unconstitutional by virtue of violating the fourth amendment, overreaching, and unnecessarily burdensome. Now, I'm not talking about the changes you're, you're talking about making necessarily. They may be a part and parcel of that, but I'm talking about reading the one that's been in place for quite a while. And so my suggestion is to revise the whole thing. Uh, the second comment that I would make would be this. The second comment I would make would be this, that because of the, you know, four said deficiencies, that the entire ordinance should be revised to specifically address bona fide issues without violating our constitutional rights, without overreaching the proper place and authority of the city government, and without creating an unnecessary burden to pet owners. The ordinance should also be revised so as to correct the errors in referencing the K R S statutes and many of the grammatical errors, just as a point of being diligent, and what appears to be inconsistencies in the proposed ordinance. Comment number three. With respect to this ordinance, I am concerned with more than the ordinance itself. As I started talking to people on the council, uh, I, I became, uh, concerned about some comments that were made because in speaking with these members of the council, it appears that it's not expected that all the provisions of this ordinance are to be obeyed by all the residents of Prestonsburg, except in the cases where it's deemed necessary by an official. Such an approach constitutes selective enforcement and opens the door to favoritism in enforcing the ordinance and related penalties. Additionally, it is not expected, if it is not expected, that all the provisions of the ordinance are to be obeyed at all times, then should it be assumed that all the city ordinance are to be approached in the same manner? Raising the question as to if the other ordinances are to be expected to be obeyed unless an official selectively decides that it is to be obeyed. That's a concern I have. And, and the idea of we'll pass a restrictive ordinance, but we'll only use it when we need to. Comment number four. If it's not important enough to be obeyed at all times and if it's not important enough to invest the effort and expense to enforce all the provisions of the ordinance at all times, it should not be incorporated into the ordinance. Anything that's not important enough to be enforced at all times should be set aside as a recommendation, not an ordinance. And finally, my last comment is this. Why is the council interested in making it more cumbersome to have pets? Uh, license fees, private kennel inspections, private kennel fees for having, here, I couldn't really tell from the ordinance if, if it was over three or over four animals, but in, in any case, uh, there's additional fees and inspection. There's also requirements about dog bedding requirements and, um, uh, requirements regarding dogs being brought in from outdoors at certain temperatures. Such restrictions, they actually may be counterproductive in discouraging citizens from taking in stray animals and discouraging citizens from adopting animals by making it more burdensome. And I'll conclude with those. I have other comments I made, but I think those are sufficient to express my concerns.
You got something to say about the animal, sir? What's your view?
I do, uh, the first is about the, you know, about the original ordinance. It's about any police or animal control officer of the city may enter your personal, your private property if they're chasing a dog that's bitten somebody. Uh, that and the fees, the fees, you know, taxing animal ownership. You know, uh, my dogs are treated better than most people, you know. You know, I don't want seeing them waiting on me in the middle of the night for mistreating my dogs, so they're treated good. But, uh, you know, that's my big issue with it, you know, taxes surrounding animals, uh, you know, inspecting if you own, you know, uh, two or more dogs or cats, which I do, they all live inside, they're fat and happy. Uh, you know, having a home inspection for that, paying a tax on them, having a private kennel fee, and having somebody being able to enter my private property because they're chasing a dog.
That's a public safety issue, I'll get back to that. You got something to say, sir?
I, same thing, Mayor, uh, but I was going to make this comment after speaking with some city councilmen. I think there might be, maybe you got to explain it because it's, it's under my understanding that when Shag told me that this was already law, I was assuming this wasn't already law. Um, and I think that might be the breakdown here for me is just understanding, well, if it's already law, then what we need to get back to is, I understand your meaning, make sure that animals are fed to a certain, you know, certain amount and so on. But, um, I do, even if it's already law, I think these two provisions for me as well raises some concern as far as, I, I look at it like this, I pay, I own my house here in Prestonsburg, I pay city property tax as well as county tax. Everybody knows we have a tax, a tax, and a tax. Guys, I just don't want another tax, I mean.
The tax and the fees and the licenses is a state issue, it's not our issue.
Okay.
That, that's a state issue. We not, we, we're not going to go out and force a state, if the state's on it, we're not going to. The second thing is about us chasing a dog, if a dog is biting someone, we don't know who the owner is, we don't know, we didn't have a collar, we don't know if it's bed outrage, if it's rabid or not. That's a public safety issue and we want to do whatever we can to keep that dog from biting anyone else.
I understand that, but you know, that violates the constitution.
That's correct.
And I hold that.
You got to understand where public safety comes in and then where, where your rights to have a dog that's running wild and rabid or whatever bites somebody in my yard, then your rights have already overruled somebody else's rights.
What I'm saying is, say, well, my dogs are not rabid, but if somebody's dog runs on my property, I hold my constitutional rights to the highest degree, far above public safety. I mean, you know, that's, you know, I signed up for it, I fought for it, and I will die for it this very second. You know, I've been there, done that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am, me or you?
Um, if, say, someone else's, I don't know if you have kids, um, but say some, someone else's dog in the neighborhood is rabid or mean, it goes into your yard, bites your child or someone, it injures them, you know, is it okay and it runs back onto their owner's, the original owner's property? Would it be okay for the police to go get that dog off their property?
From the original owner's property?
Yeah.
Yes, for probable cause, but not from my property.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that too. The constitution, the fourth amendment does set up a means to do that without just giving an officer freedom to do that at will, uh, and, you know.
So if it bit your child and it runs off into someone else's property in the neighborhood, you don't want the police to go down to those people's property to get the rabid dog?
Like I said.
That's running loose in the neighborhood?
There's a constitutional way to do that. That's to protect the rights like this gentleman fought for so that we don't erode those rights by trying to do things that we think are kind and good and sound good at one point, it's so easy to give up our rights.
May I speak one more time on your topic? You know, if a dog runs in my yard, because I don't have kids, let's say it bites my dog. Dog runs up, bites me, runs back to its owner, so well, I call the police, they come, I show them the, give them the probable cause, bite my, some of my dog, you know, dog, say, I saw it. They go over there and they, okay, this is the dog, which I have cameras all in my house, I have it on camera anyway. But if somebody else's dog, say, your dog gets loose, I don't know if you have dogs or not.
I do.
But say they get loose and, you know, they bit, Joe blowed down the road and then they run to my yard, you know, you can ask me if you can come into my yard, but you know, don't just help yourself.
Mayor, I think one of the issues that the citizens are having an issue with is that we're not being more restrictive than the state. We're, we're codifying what the state, and that's how this goes. Federal law governs state law, state law governs municipalities. We are simply enumerating what's to be expected. You all are, you all are having a battle that we, we have to uphold state law.
Yeah, but the constitution do have resolve.
This is not unconstitutional. This is not, it's been enacted by the state, the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Had it been unconstitutional, it would have been overturned by now.
Jennifer, I actually got some of the K R S laws and a lot of the ones in the city ordinance are more restrictive than what the, the state ordinances, or the state K R S laws. For example, uh, in an epidemic of rabies, uh, the state law requires the health department to do something about it. And in this one, it allows the mayor to have every dog in the city muzzled in, in an epidemic of rabies, which to me is overreaching burdensome. Dogs that are inside, uh, being kept inside, that have no, uh, exposure to rabies, that have the rabies shots. Why would you need to muzzle the dog like that?
Well, I'm not aware of the differential between ours enumerated, but as the mayor says, under the guise of public safety, he has the ability. And it's not the mayor or the council choosing to enforce any ordinance or resolution or law. That's up to our city police. So if you talked, if, and, and law, and, and animal enforcement, if you talked to a city councilman who made you think that they are going to pick and choose which laws to enact, they're not enacting our laws anyway, they're simply passing their, their yay or their nay for the resolution or the ordinance. It's up to the law enforcement officers to enact and in effect uphold everything that's been passed.
I need to touch base on that just a minute. The fact that you said that we would, that it would be allowed to pick and choose what laws we enforce and that we're so favoritism, so, one thing, I personally take that offensive. I take it offensive from my police officers. One hundred percent because we try to do what's just and right, Mayor, but we deal with it.
Well, you're the one that told me that. We were standing out here and you basically told me that we're going to enact this thing and the officers would use it when they need to. But we don't need to deal with every law. You were telling me basically, don't get excited about all of the provisions of it because we're not going to enforce all the provisions.
I think we were talking specifically about the licensing.
We were talking about several things, but it doesn't.
Go ahead, no, that's exactly what I'm talking about, yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I'm going to go back to what I said. I think the breakdown is, is we don't understand, you know, I would suggest, you know, Mr. Elliott, just give us interpretation of this in layman's terms so that we can fully understand it. Because when I came in here, like I said, I, I thought it hadn't been enacted yet until Shag told me that it was already done.
Been in place since two thousand.
Two thousand nine.
Basically what it boils down to is if you are abusing your dogs, you're neglecting your dogs.
Animals.
Animals.
Domesticated.
All right, if you are abusing, you're neglecting, someone lets us know that you're doing that, we have to act at that.
We have to follow up.
That's what we want to do.
And, you know, I have animals and I have kids too.
I got a hundred and twenty-five pound lapdog that lays in my lap, so I understand, I love pets.
For, but I think there is a breakdown as far as us understanding what's being passed and I would just like to further understand it better, that's why I asked.
I understand.
If our city attorney can just maybe break that down for us and, and, you know, this is a bigger issue than we thought, you know, this might mean credit committee, you know, reach out, do some surveys with the citizens of Prestonsburg, maybe see how they feel.
You know, the thing about is, we did, we did create a committee and we offered them that opportunity to step up and do it, and Sheena's the only one stepped up with through our council.
Okay.
So we, we are doing the process, but people aren't, people want to wait to the last minute trying to get on board.
As a former police officer, showing up at a scene and not understanding, having subjective terminology as a law, and Lori knows this because she was prosecuting attorney, it's easier when you delineate and line out and give parameters to look at. The only changes in this from two thousand and nine are those, where we are calling adequacy, what adequacy of food is. We are actually detailing more what it's, what's adequacy. So if Ross shows up at some place, if somebody's been complaining, they're not feeding their dog, they're on a four foot chain, this gives him more of a definitive look at the situation instead of his idea of what it is compared to James's idea, compared to Les's idea, compared to Shag's idea.
Everyone's on the same page.
Everyone's on more of a same page. It's more, more objective instead of subjective.
It's more like an animal welfare check than it is.
That's all it is.
Yeah.
It is, it's a lot more, more forceful personnel, more of a definition of what it means instead of one word, one word, one word.
It does need to be objective, I agree a hundred percent with that. Um, but it needs to be limited to the things that are significant enough to encroach on our freedoms, uh, not just.
That's libertarian, I don't feel encroaches on my freedoms at all. As a matter of fact, I believe that what it does is it assists me in knowing the proper way. And it's been taken, I mean, your, your idea of proper might be different than my idea of proper and that's why we delineated it for that purpose.
Well, like I said, with the fourth amendment's clearly.
But Charlie, again, the fourth amendment, you keep bringing the fourth amendment up. This passed, Kentucky law passed something that the federal government allowed them to pass that we've only enacted.
I asked a question on that. Is there a K R S that says if a dog bites someone and runs onto my property, that a police officer can fall onto my property?
I thought it was on a public safety with the department.
But I mean, is there a K R S that specifically states what this is?
I think I can.
Goes under anything that the police are following up on criminal, be it cat, dog, person.
I think that one of the nearest things that the police department has to do is understand that any time that we stop a car, any time that we respond to a complaint, that we're dealing with the fourth amendment that protects you from unreasonable searches and seizures that warrant Shaq be issued without probable cause. And then there's this thing that a lot of people don't understand, it's called reasonable suspicion and exigency. So exigency comes into play here, so if I'm in, and I don't want to use the term fresh pursuit because it typically applies to people, but if I'm at a scene where a dog has bitten a child and that dog is running loose and presently poses a risk to public safety, I have an exigency and a duty to deal with that dog. Once that exigency has ended, so I arrive at the scene ten minutes later and the dog is subdued or is back at its owner's house, that exigency is ended, you as a private property owner don't have anything to worry about. But if that dog is still at large and it's still creating a hazard to public safety, then I have that exigency as the courts have outlined time and time and time again to end that risk for public safety. So I can speak on behalf of all sixteen officers of the Prestonsburg Police Department. We take your constitutional rights, we deal with them every day in district court and circuit court and so on. You don't have to worry about those because I'm not going to get a federal nineteen eighty-three lawsuit pinned on me for violating your civil rights. I mean, we've all been through twenty weeks of the police academy to understand where we can and can't go regardless of the situation.
And I greatly appreciate that, I do. I, I like, you know, I've never had an issue with Prestonsburg City Police, or any police for that matter, you know, I get along great. I have several friends that are. But you know, just from a little bit of research I've done and knowing about exigent circumstances and this and that, I don't think it applies to an animal. You know, that's just, that's just me, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think I am.
This will be my thoughts on that, it's not the animal, it's the public safety risk that that animal poses.
Uh, yeah, I tell you what it sounds to me like with this type of discussion. It sounds to me like there needs to be, uh, more of an opportunity for this to be delved into with people that are interested at this point. I understand that you're saying that there was an opportunity for it. If it was, I wasn't aware of it. But it sounds like the, uh, the best avenue to satisfy all parties would be to look into it again.
Well, if, if motion's been made, motion's been accepted, it's an ordinance, it will not be called for a roll call vote unless somebody rescinds a motion and asks for further review. That's all the thing that can happen.
I need to correct.
You have to rescind and it will have to be rescinded and we have to make a motion to do that.
Yeah, before, before you do that, because I'll probably leave, I need to correct one thing though, when we were talking about the discussion about selective enforcement, part of that discussion was dogs on short leashes, I remember that as I'm sitting here. And so it didn't just apply to, to fees, we were talking about enforcement of things related to dogs. And again, as I said when I first came in, I don't want to see any dog abused. I don't want to see, uh, neighbors have to put up with, uh, improper, uh, treatment of dogs from either, uh, joint and property owners, I don't want to see any of that. But there's a right way to do it and then there's a quick way to do it that could easily be the wrong way to do it. And so that's my concern.
You're right, we did mention that, as you said, you're talking about that. I said, we're not going up there and measure a nineteen foot lead and say it's twenty foot.
Right.
But common sense tells me I can look and tell if it's a four foot lead or twenty foot lead. That was my thoughts on that, so. All right, have a motion, roll call vote.
Brittany Brown?
Yes.
Shag Brown?
Yes.
David Gerhart?
Yes.
Rick Hughes?
Yes.
Josh Turner?
Yes.
Don Douglas?
Yes.
Thank y'all. We appreciate your input, we really do, we're not going to step on people's rights.
Thank y'all for letting us speak.
That's no problem.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, our meetings are every third Monday at six o'clock.
Same time, it's Tuesday.
We welcome input, not just on that, please, feel free to come out.
Appreciate guys, thanks very much.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other unfinished business? All right, update on mitigation projects. That's the two projects that we're working on, one is Criminal Branch. Criminal Branch was bid, we could not touch, we couldn't even get close to them when we went to on the bid. So we've had to back up and start renegotiating with the company, we won't have one bid on it. We are about to terms on that so we can start that project as quickly as we can get it done. The other one is Maze Branch. Maze Branch has been reviewed by the federal government since May of last year, actually May the twentieth when we mailed it off to them. So it's just a matter of time. It's got to go through the process, it's FEMA, they've got a lot of issues with fires and storms and floods and everything else. So I'm sure they're backed up on paperwork, but as soon as we get that back, we'll be able to move forward with it. Now I need the approval of the minutes for the last meetings.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Approved resolution number zero two dash two zero. Oh, bills, I'm sorry, approval of bills.
So moved.
I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Approval of resolution number zero two, twenty twenty, municipal road aid.
Can I read the plan? Uh, resolution adopting and approving the execution of the municipal road aid protocol contract between the Incorporated City and the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Municipal Aid for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand twenty, as provided in the Kentucky Revised Statutes and accepting all streets referred to therein as being streets which are a part of the Incorporated City.
We do this every year so that we're, uh, we can receive money from each way.
I like the motion.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, declare surplus recycling, declare surplus to recycling bill. We got a new one, it's in place, the old one's out of place now.
Exposed.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Open bids. The first bid is for the Archer Park building that, uh, for those of you who don't know, the creek has undermined their old, the used little handball building and it's, we've had to condemn it, so we're having to build a new building for that. We took bids.
Uh, Sesko Builders from Pikeville, Kentucky, seventy thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
That is a seventy-five by now.
Forty by seventy-five. Full barn for stores.
Yes, forty with, uh, with roll up doors.
Rolling steel doors.
I need a motion.
What was the?
We didn't see anything yet.
That plus that?
I had one bidder, that was it.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. It didn't have your mail outside envelope. Uh, this is for magnet heating and cooling on our X B A C hourly work. It does not preclude us from bidding out our major projects, this is just for hourly, we call them.
Magnets.
Magnets, magnets, the magnets group. Uh, it's elaborated, eighty dollars per hour.
I think it was only one on heat and cold.
One was up from Maggards.
Maggards Heating and Cooling.
Yep, that's all we have, X K C work.
I'm motion.
Second, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. This is, um, this is something we have to do yearly for those of you who ask. We have to do this to, uh, makes it a lot easier and quicker for us to have the paying services.
Description of equipment operators, duncin, instruction.
Yeah.
Uh, freight liner, F bill one twelve, sixty dollars per hour.
That's just a schedule of those with, uh, that's just a schedule of the price per hour of the.
It's a dunc truck, yes, single axle dunc truck. Uh, international sixty. Uh, international, sixty dollars an hour, excavator. Cat, three twelve Cs, a hundred dollars, a John Deere, 70. A Dozer, John Deere's 90. Backhoe, cat, 70 dollars a month or, uh, hour. And Skid steer is 60 dollars an hour.
So is this equipment or personnel using equipment we must bring in?
It's equipment with an operator. That will come to work for us on hourly basis.
So this is, this is a, go ahead.
And that's all we have.
Those are easier.
Need a motion. I still need a motion. And a second. These are, these are all printed in the paper. The whole nine yards is like a quote. CDP said everything. I'm just going to even make up a dozen.
Did, um, state change the regulations where you don't have to put the paper, you can put it on the website?
No.
I know they were looking to do that.
There's a law in front of the legislation for every city over 80,000, which we have, well, here, about 40,000 dollars a year maybe. In just advertising, the local papers. Yeah, I was really complaining about that a lot until I found out they were at half a million Jefferson County.
So we have to be quiet?
Yeah, I just sort of, I just sort of dropped my language. I stayed out of that one.
It works for 30,000, 30,000.
This is, uh, mountain aggregates, stuff for gravel. Uh, number 10 limestone sand is 13 dollars and 25 cents a ton. Dents grade is 14.25 per ton. Number one, number two, number four limestone, 16 dollars a ton. Number 57 limestone is 16.50 a ton. Class two limestone, 17.50 a ton. And number eight limestone, 23.50 a ton.
Is that delivered or is that for us? Let me two, one of them be delivered, one of them be.
Okay, delivery. Here's the delivery here.
That's just if we go pick them up.
We go pick them up. Delivery, if, if they deliver, uh, limestone sand is 22.25. It's all per ton. Dents grade is 23.25. Number one, two, four is 25 dollars. Number 57 is 25.50. Class two is 26.50 and number eight limestone, 32.50. One more here, I believe.
I think it's grass law.
That's grass law. Is this all we have?
Some bids we had on it.
I'll make one.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? All opposed. So, great news. My niece has gotten a job back home and she's coming back home from Lexington. We're pretty excited about that. We've been worried about her in big town all by herself.
And she loved our son.
Oh, she was. Now she's going back to where he is.
Oh, okay.
Now her, now her entire life has been laid out on around Prestonburg.com.
Okay, this is also gravel. I'm assuming this is pickup.
Huh?
Says pickup.
It's still the same group.
This is mountain aggregates. Well, it's like, uh.
They're getting some.
It's like 19 dollars more. No, that's two different, that's two different companies. That was like 19 more dollars per ton.
Oh, it's the same.
Yeah. It's the same bid as this down here. This distance is 19 dollars more. This is from Mountain Enterprises. That's from Mountain Aggregates.
Is it the same logo?
Yeah. It's two companies. They just have different provisions.
One of them's higher than others.
I'm assuming if you don't want to pay your extra 19 dollars. Ellie's going to have anything to say.
Exactly.
I was trying to get this one open. It's taped up like a, like a.
I'm just stoked that I didn't have cardboard pickup.
Huh?
I'm just stoked. I, I know, I know.
You didn't know we had cardboard pickup?
No.
We also do clear plastic and paper.
This is from Drains Unlimited, pipe and caviar baskets. Your realtors?
Let me see if there's another one in there. No, no way. That's all you have in there. That is for our pipe per foot and gavium baskets. That's just a set price for us use year round, even in emergency situations. They have no competition.
Make a motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed. If we can do this, let's try it. You know how many trees we could save?
Are those two same different companies?
Well, I don't know.
Well, they, they're using the same, uh, office supplies.
It's a trickery.
This is Wilson Equipment.
That's for equipment rental. No, no, we did equipment rental, but an operator. They would use on hourly basis in emergency situations. If we're just renting equipment, that's what that bid's for.
And there's a couple hundred of them.
There is no other bid on it.
Then you don't want?
I make that motion. A motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed.
I'm going to make Don read all 200.
I'd like for you to run out of.
Even with this glasses.
So this is one that's a competitive bid.
I don't know.
I mean, they both bought their, they actually looks. Same person actually sent it out. It's not Christmas present.
This is, uh. With Mountain Enterprises, both of them, so.
Well, they're, they're, you got two different bids. That is for them to deliver it and put it down and lay it. And this is for them to press and go get it.
Okay, if we go get it. Uh, asphalt base, 78 dollars a ton. Asphalt binder, 82 dollars a ton. And asphalt surface, 86 dollars a ton. Now they deliver it. Asphalt base is 1,550. Asphalt binder is 1,1355. Asphalt surface is 1,870. And edge keys, 50 dollars.
I need a motion to accept both of those. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed. I do need to make one caveat here. Even though we have done a yearly bid on this right now, when we do the federal project that we're working on, the rural trail project, we have to rebid that.
Individual because it's a separate funding.
Because it's a separate funding issue and they told us we had to, for all reasons. Any other new business? If not, we need to go.
Have you had any conversations anymore with Suddenlink?
Yes, I have. As a matter of fact, two weeks ago I had one.
I had two.
We can't, we can't be talking about it.
Yeah.
I mean, we're putting this 10 and 20 dollar addition on people's bills.
Well, I'm not sure because I didn't know about that. That's how I had a meeting.
I actually had my bill laid out.
I got that later the next day.
It's almost 10 dollars, isn't it?
Yeah, mine's swinging.
What's it say when it's for?
Well, when you ask them, they just say.
Well, if you compare the schemes and taxes, that, the surcharges, that's what we know.
In West Virginia, the, some, some that I've been looking at, as they were complaining over there also, a lot of them said that when they spoke to somebody in customer services, they related it to the cost of adding where they purchased, where Altis purchased Suddenlink and cable, what was it?
Charter.
Charter. In New York. That where they purchased those, that they were doing a software upgrade and that there was, uh, an accompaniment that they pushed out.
Well, let me catch you off where I'm at on that. There's, uh, the city of Pilewood and the county up there on, have them. Matter of fact, uh, Pilewood Commission had a meeting on them last night. So they're a little bit behind where we're at right now. But I will tell you that, uh, they're telling me how much better it's getting. And in some areas it has because they are basically have it amped up. Get your amps turned up, get their amps put in. But we still have overall issues like Don's house that we're still having problems. And, and I don't say that just because he's having problems on hourly basis and they're seeming to be soft.
I've been to my mother's house 12 times in a month.
Well, I need to, I have Suddenlink issues at gmail.com. I forward them to corporate office. Corporate office does respond to them and we get the information back to what they do. Now, what the corporates told happens and what happens out here on the street is probably two different things. From what I hear from both sides, I think it is. There is actually some counties, cities and states, even a state, as mentioned, class action lawsuits. It's complicated and it's, it's an issue, but they have threatened. But we do have to discuss something under KRS 61.810 subsection 1 subsection G. In real estate and business, we have to have two I've stated, but one of those involves this. And it will be 61.810 subsection 1 subsection C litigation. So we can take care of all those in executive session. I need a motion.
Opposed.
I have a second. All in favor?
This is hysterical. Security can't hold it back.
Could you convert about the difference?
Howard, Howard, hey, Howard, you the chief out there?
Yes, sir.
All right, y'all come in here. Have a seat. Y'all may not be. I need a motion coming out.
Motion.
I have a second. All in favor? All opposed. We have a couple motions coming out.
First motion I'd like to make is to allow the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Linkport Resources and to sign any documents related to our discussion in executive session.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor? All opposed. Next motion.
I'd make a motion that the mayor continue discussion on the realization of purchase of property on behalf of the city.
For the options that we had.
And the options that we had discussed.
Second. Uh, all in favor? All opposed. Uh, the last issue is I sent the contract out to you all and you all had a chance to look at it. On the, with Lifeguard Amnesters. And I, I made no comments about it. I told Lifeguard Amnesters and I told Jamie and I told you, I told all of them. I, we're not, we're not, we're very transparent. We are being very transparent, but we're not trying to hide anything from anybody. You all seen the contract. We have two options.
Let me ask you a question. You're the chief.
Yes, sir.
You see everything every day. Do we run enable service out of city of Prestonburg?
Yes, sir.
So, we will go with contract? Or are y'all going to agree to sign the contract? Or we're, we're following through the COE and the guards and I'll tell them that.
Well, y'all want to.
I need a motion on it.
I make motion, we pursue our COE and, and, so continue that process.
I have a motion and a second. I have a second. All in favor? All opposed. Now I need the one Harry almost does.
Motion adjourned.
I have a motion adjourned and a second. All in favor? All opposed.